... All right, all right. Okay, hi, Jordan. You seen that coming? Debbie?
Oh.
On your hair. Sure. I apologize for not making the dinner. I just got back. No, I know. I'm happy. I just got home. Yeah, sure. I was sorry. I'm sorry. I say I just got back. I'm sorry. I say I just got back. I'm sorry. 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 Everybody's... Hi. Hi stranger. You got here. There? Sure. Just barely got there. Get right up there. Get right up there. George, I had this young lady doesn't like it. Excellent, sir. No, we can't see her. Yeah, Timmy. Right up here. Shining right here. Thank you. Thank you. One more question. George. Come on, take one of them other kids.
Congratulations to the flag. And I am the state of America. Considered republic of which it stands. One nation, from underground, invisible. The religion does just for all.
I get the enthusiasm. Before the business commences with the evening, like you think the odds for their wonderful dinner, which I could make unfortunately, if you'd back the time, would also like to express the appreciation of the city and the alderman. I hope they aren't too stuffed to be able to operate, but they are, I hope you bear with us. We have a roll call first place.
Mayor.
Here.
First ward.
Here.
Second ward.
Here.
Third ward.
Here.
Fourth ward.
Here.
Fifth ward.
Here.
Sixth ward.
Here.
I'll present it.
Thank you. There it is. Okay. She's something sad.
First item, please.
Hey, we received this on the hot paint machine for the traffic department. I have two bids. The first one being from Linear Dynamics, Parsipan Inc., here.
While he's looking at the bids, I want to be ladies, well, the young ladies who are acting on behalf of myself and the alderman. They will be serving as the mayor and county council tonight.
Give us a bid price that would be in here. But they're all... This is a five or eight dollars. It's a six dollars. It's a seven dollars. It's a eight dollars. It's a nine dollars. It's a ten dollars. It's a eleven dollars. It's a twelve dollars. It's a thirteen dollars. It's a fourteen dollars. It's a fifteen dollars. It's a sixteen dollars. It's a seventeen dollars. It's a eighteen dollars. It's a twenty dollars. It's a thirty dollars. It's a forty dollars. It's a fifty dollars. It's a sixty dollars. It's a seventy dollars. It's a eighty dollars. It's a ninety dollars. It's a hundred dollars. Before we read out the bid, we're going to open up the second bid, which is Robert's Equipment, Casanova and New York.
I have a lot of... These guys are really very... She's supposed to be in the first bid. I don't know. I don't know. Let's see what that would be. Let's see. Before we read out the bid, we're going to open up the second bid, which is Robert's Equipment, Casanova and New York. The bid for Linear Dynamics, for the hot paint machine, is thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thirty thousand nine sixty-four. Who is linear what?
Linear Darnhammicks. Thirty thousand nine sixty-four.
Take his night bid. He has the...
The bid for Linear Dynamics, for the hot paint machine, is thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty-four.
Thirty thousand nine sixty-four. Who is linear what?
Linear Darnhammicks. Thirty thousand nine sixty-four. The bid for Robert's Equipment, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. These will be referred to Steve Lung and the Traffic Lieutenant for their recommendation award at the next meeting of May nineteenth.
Hold a second.
Next item, please.
Oh, sorry.
Motion, please.
We have a motion on the bid?
I'll offer it.
The second, again, fourth ward.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Next item, please.
Where's the meeting of the council held on April twenty-first? The city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May fifth, the county council chambers, relative to a proposed amendment to the lease agreement between the Fulton YMCA and the city of Fulton. The hearing is now declared open.
This is the proposition involving the leasing of city lands near Bullhead Point to the Y for construction of a new Y. The stipulation is that the city has to set aside twenty-four acres for outside recreation and great bear farm. Purpose of this public hearing is for any comments on that deal. Anybody? Yes?
Yeah, what we don't understand is you're going to set aside twenty-four acres for YMCA and stuff like that, but not for Fulton Softball Association. And also, what we would like to...
Wait a minute. We're not setting aside twenty-four acres for the Y. This is twenty-four acres, a stipulation by the DDC, that we set aside twenty-four acres as compensation for leasing the Y, seven acres of land where they're building.
Okay, that's fine, but what we don't understand is you're talking about charging us five to ten dollars a head to play softball next year.
Wait a minute. What's that got to do with this proposition? You know, your motion is coming up later.
No.
We're talking about the YMCA building up, putting building up on seven acres of land.
Right.
And we're going to have to set aside twenty-four acres of land as compensation, because this is land that was originally designated as parkland. So we have to set aside something according to the requirement of DDC. That's why we're doing this.
Did you find out how much you leased the land?
How about one dollar?
Okay, now, we justify one dollar for the YMCA, but yet you still want to make us pay five to ten dollars a head to play softball in Fulton?
First place.
All right. All right. Okay, but we'll come back up. Bye.
Any more comment about the YMCA?
Was that serious, one dollar for the Y? Is that a serious proposal?
Sure.
Did they be allowed to rent that for one dollar? Doesn't that seem to be kind of a waste of a way for the city to take in some money? I know that the Y probably has its problems of being able to build that place, and I know that they have their money problems, but it seems to me that if you're going to lease out some property to an organization to build something on your property, and they're going to intake money, we all know that the Y charges so much to come in, it seems to me that that's a great waste of potential for the city to make some money.
Let me ask you this. Do you think the Y is an important community, services?
Absolutely. It's an important community service, as is a lot of other things. But I'm not going to say that. I'm not bringing that up in particular, but there's a lot of things that are important to our community. But if you're going to say it's an important community service, as are a lot of other things, you still, if you're using the city's property, it seems to me you've got to justify a one dollar proposal to lease it to the, I mean, one dollar, that's...
Do you want to give me some of that?
Yeah, I will.
You know, frankly, I'm a little tired of being put on Spotify these things that somebody else wants to do. Wait a minute. Let's have a little order, please. If you want to speak, that's good. Okay, speak.
The Y, the Y does support, but over house, it charges three hundred dollars more. Going to Y, they may be charged a few bucks more.
I see exactly where this gentleman's coming from, and I'm not saying that it's absolutely a bad idea. Don't get me wrong. What I'm saying is, is you've got seven acres of land there. You've got seven acres of land there at Bullhead Point. We all know where Bullhead Point is, and...
Well, let me point something out that maybe you misunderstood, because I was originally too. It's near Bullhead Point. It is not on Bullhead Point. It is in front of the, what's the apartment complex?
We swing.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
It's in front of the apartment complex. As a matter of fact, originally, they wanted to go for the lake. I said, I don't think we ought to do that, and now it's what, two hundred feet from the lake there, so that it's not approaching on any lakefront. It's only frontage on Route Three.
We're saying, are they going to, as is, when they're taking in money from these people, and they're getting, I think right now it's thirty-eight dollars if you want certain kind of memberships there per month, when they're taking that in, are they paying taxes to the city to do that? I mean, are they already paying back into the community?
No, they're not in private corporation. But let me say this, too. They do not make enough on fees. If it wasn't for contributions that are made to the Y, the Y could not function. I think the Y is a very important community service, and, you know, without it, there's something lacking here, so I think you're getting paid back a lot more than what you're given by not charging a lease amount. Yes?
Did you say this is on parkland?
Pardon me?
It's parkland. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
From the DDC, this is parkland.
Yeah, this is land that was given by the federal government. That's why we have to make that arrangement. Chuck?
Jordan, I know where a lot of people are coming from, and a lot of people here know where they're coming from. I'm here to represent the Fulton Softball Association. As you can see, there's a lot of people here. I'm going to ask my ballplayers, let them get on with their business. I know what you're saying is unfair. We've been saying this all along. Let them get on with their business, then let us bring up our business.
Thanks, Chuck, because the FSA is on the agenda. Yes?
Twenty-four acres of Great Bear. Twenty-four acres of Great Bear Farm, does that mean the gates will come down there and it'll be open to the public? Or it's going to be closed off?
No, twenty-four acres is only a small part of Great Bear. It's in the corner of the Great Bear Farm, and it doesn't have any bearing on the access.
It's a shame that the public can't get in there.
Well, I'm sure you're familiar, as everybody is, with what's happening there. The city would love to develop it, but every time they do something, it's torn down, mutilated, destroyed, and worse, so it's a real problem. We just don't have the personnel or the, or the county to lease it. Yeah, I agree. It's a shame. Yes?
I have a question. The YMCA is really a great organization. I understand that, but you do have to pay to use it, and I see it as being an asset to the city, but to the children who can't afford to use the facilities of the Y, they will not be welcomed in this city allowed, whatever. If you can't be a member, you can't participate type deal, and they do not give special rates to families who can't afford. If you can't afford to pay, you don't belong, and the city's going to help put in this very worthwhile organization when you have many children in this city who cannot afford to belong to the Y, or their families can't, and they don't have any other thing to do in the city. I understand the recreation thing is going to be gone from the children, is it not, this summer? And the Y won't open their doors to these children, so if the Y won't open their doors to these children who can't color in the parks now or use the pool, why should the taxpayers of the city donate to the Y when the poor children can't? I don't mean poor, you know what I'm saying? Children who are less fortunate. Families who are less fortunate, not just children, because they do charge. Nobody gets there free. Nobody. You don't put this around a park, a park designated by the DDC. I think it should be donated to something where everybody can use it, not just people who can afford to use it.
Good evening, Mr. President. It's kind of late. The public, what's going on with the Y and the situation? Is it impressive?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm president of the YMCA this year, and to the best of my knowledge, there are many, many scholarships given, and I don't believe that, I've asked that same question, this lady has asked many times, are people allowed to use the Y that can't afford it? And the answer I get is yes. I'll explore that further to make sure that's true, but I, my understanding is that people are not barred from using the Y because of lack of money.
Please do, because I do know families that have not been able to use it if they can't afford to use it.
May I, if you will come see me in my office, and I will take this question up with the Y?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
What's the twenty-four acre section of the Great Bear Farm are you going to designate as parks and recreation out there?
As far as I know, it would be the...
I'm clear.
Yeah, it would be the northwest corner, northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
Around the road, around the...
Does that include the square section you have gridded out on the old Dix Farm?
I'm sorry, I'm here...
You have a section in your grid out there that you have sectioned out out there, so there's no taxes being paid on. In other words, nobody's laying claim to that land out there on that one section that's supposedly park of the Great Bear Farm. Now, you're saying you're going to use that twenty-four section above the gravel bed?
Hey, I wouldn't know what that is. All I know is I saw a man.
But it's clearly second option. I'd inquire on myself.
I don't know.
Is the plan being able to be used for parks and recreation? Are you going to designate it as sanctuary or something?
No, it has to be used for outdoor recreation. It can't be set aside as a sanctuary.
So any money in the city is up there and use that section of land and that twenty-four acre?
Oh, no, it isn't. You can't just go up there and use it anytime you want to. It has to be developed by the city.
No, it would be, oh, no, it would be developed by the city.
Well, in the sense that, for example, you couldn't go up there and organize a softball game.
I agree with that. [laughter] The section you're designating is bordering my land, the Price Farm. That's the section you're designating. That's why we care.
And the west side of Fifty-Sup?
Yeah.
Well, then you would be definitely interested. All I can say is right now, the city has no plans to develop it any more than they have any plans to develop the parcel of the Y that's being built on. You know, we simply don't have the money. If somebody wants to give us the money, we'll be glad to develop.
I didn't hear about that.
I'm pretty sure that's what it is, but...
Is there any way to come out?
Yeah. Dick, one? Have you got a map of that area?
I have a map.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Council, anybody? Council on the countenance? Okay, the public hearing is declared closed.
Be resolved that this issue be tabled until a new survey submitted to the city attorney for his approval to be returned to this council at a future county council meeting for their action.
I'll offer it. Yeah?
Yes.
First ward?
I have a question. This is the survey we were speaking in there. Do you anticipate this quickly? There's a question there.
It should have been ready now.
It's just not here yet?
No.
I think we'll have it within a couple of weeks. I don't think that's unreasonable.
By the next regular meeting of the county council?
I don't know.
By the next regular meeting of the county council?
I don't know. Depends on the surveyor and a number of other factors. It'd be impossible to guess.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Next item, please.
Where is it? At a meeting of the council held on April twenty-first, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May fifth, relative to a proposed amendment to Section eighty-six point one of the zoning ordinance the city of Fulton entitled Special Use Permits, which we would remove the restriction against special use permits in an R-two residential district. Hearing is declared open.
I'd like to make a comment.
Ross.
Okay, in reference to the...
Maybe you have John explain what this is.
Okay, explain first.
Basically, what a special use permit is, is it's, it grants in a particular area, a special use in a property that, you know, a business or something that could come into a specific area would be at, and it's there for the duration of that business, and then at the end of that business or the sale of that property, it refers back to its original zone, okay? You know, depending upon what is asked in the special use permit.
Can you give an example?
Well, if somebody wanted to put in a bakery in their home, okay, and the neighbors didn't have any objections, okay? They would come before us in our two zone and ask that they be granted a special use permit, okay? And as long as the neighbors didn't have any problems with it, and everything was up to the codes and everything else like that, they would ask for approval, and then at that time, you know, we would, it's a county council vote on it. That's an example of a special use permit.
Wouldn't it be referred to the planning permission?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, that too, but then it comes back after a recommendation is made, and then it comes back to us and we vote on it. But there are several different things that have to happen before it comes back to us in the initial, or the initial vote, the final vote is made.
Mr. Bell, Your Honor, I ask you, in reference to the proposed amendment, special use permits specifically in an R-two district, I request that we consider the ramifications of such a motion. Unfortunately, the property in question, Mr. Zellers, has already been modified to accommodate inhabitants. At the request of Mr. Lincoln, I visited this property several months ago to view its appropriateness in relationship to other structures. I found upon examination of the premises that the property in question was professionally assembled and appeared to blend well with the neighborhood. As a matter of concern, I asked Mr. Lincoln if all prerequisites for such an addition had been secured or approved. He assured me and Mr. Zeller that there would be no resistance or objection to the structure. On the surface, Mr. Lincoln was correct. In all actuality, he was wrong. The objection is not from any one individual, but stems from the interpretation of our city charter and code. While searching, while researching this issue, I found that our code was amended in nineteen ninety-one where it clearly states that no special use permit will be issued or considered in an R-two residential district. Upon further investigation, I found that Mr. Lincoln...
The Y won't open their doors to these children who can't color in the parks now or use the pool. Why should the taxpayers of the city donate to the Y when the poor children can't? I don't mean poor, you know what I'm saying? Children who are less fortunate. Families who are less fortunate, not just children, because they do charge. Nobody gets there free, nobody. [applause] You don't put this kind of park, a park designated by the DEC, I think it should be donated to something where everybody can use it, not just people who can afford to use it.
[inaudible]
Mr. President, is it late for the publicist? What's going on with the Y and the situation as of present?
Thank you, Mayor. I am president of the YMCA this year, and to the best of my knowledge, there are many, many scholarships given, and I don't believe that...I've asked that same question this lady has asked many times, are people allowed to use the Y if they can't afford it? And the answer I get is yes. I'll explore that further to make sure that's true, but I have my understanding is that people are not barred from using the Y because of lack of money.
Please do, because I do know families that have not been able to use it if they can't afford to use it.
May I, if you will come see me at my office, then I will take this question up with the Y.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
What's the 24-acre section of the Great Bear Farm are you going to designate as parks and recreation out there?
As far as I know, it would be...
I'm clear with the dialogue.
Yeah, it would be the northwest corner, northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
Around the road, around the...
Does that include the square section you have gridded out on the old Dix Farm?
I'm sorry, I'm here.
You have a section in your grid out there that you have sectioned out out there that there's no tax being paid on? In other words, nobody's laying claim to that land out there on that one section that's supposedly part of the Great Bear Farm? Now you're saying you're going to use that 24-section above the gravel bed?
Hey, I wouldn't know what that is. All I know is I saw a man.
But it's barely second off, man. I didn't worry on myself.
I don't know.
Is the plan being able to be used for parks and recreation, or are you going to designate it as a sanctuary or something?
No, it has to be used for outdoor recreation. It can't be set aside as a sanctuary.
So any money in the city is up there and use that section of land and that 24-acre?
Oh, no, it isn't. You can't just go up there and use it anytime you want to. It has to be developed by the city.
No, it would be, well, it would be developed by the city.
Well, in the sense that, for example, you couldn't go up there and organize a softball game.
[laughter] The 24-acre section you're designating is bordering my land, the Price Farm. That's the section you're designating. That's why we care.
And the west side of the 57th?
Yeah.
Well, then you would be definitely interested. All I can say right now is the city has no plans to develop it anymore than they have any plans to develop the parcel the Y is being built on. You know, we simply don't have the money. If somebody wants to give us the money, we'll be glad to develop it.
I'm pretty sure that's what it is, but... Is there any way in my office?
Yeah. Dick one? Have you got a map of that area?
I have a map.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counsel, anybody in the council on the countenance? Okay, the public hearing is declared closed.
Be resolved that this issue be tabled until a new survey submitted to the city attorney for his approval to be returned to this council at a future county council meeting for their action.
I'll offer it. Yeah?
Yes.
First word?
I have a question.
Yes.
The survey, you were speaking in there, do you anticipate this quickly? There's a question there.
It should have been ready now.
It's just not due yet.
No.
I think we'll have it within a couple of weeks. I don't think that's unreasonable.
By the next regular meeting of the town council?
I don't know.
By the next regular meeting of the town council?
I don't know. Depends on the surveyor and a number of other factors. It'd be impossible to guess.
Second word?
Yes.
Third word?
Yes.
Fourth word? Yes. Fifth word? Yes. Quick word? Yeah.
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Next item, please.
Where is it? At a meeting the council held on April 21st, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting on May 5th relative to a proposed amendment to Section 80-6.1 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Fulton entitled "Special Use Permits," which would remove the restriction against special use permits in an R2 residential district. Hearing is declared over.
I'd like to make a comment.
Ross.
Okay, in reference to the... Maybe you'll have John explain what this is.
Okay, explain first. John, would you explain? Basically, what a special use permit is, is it's...it grants, in a particular area, a special use in a property that, you know, a business or something that could come into a specific area would be at, and it's there for the duration of that business. And then at the end of that business or the sale of that property, it refers back to its original zone, okay? You know, depending upon what is asked in a special use permit.
Can you give an example?
Well, if somebody wanted to put in a bakery in their home, okay, and the neighbors didn't have any objections, okay, they would come before us in our two zone and ask that may be granted a special use permit, okay? And as long as the neighbors didn't have any problems with it and everything was up to the codes and everything else like that, they would ask for approval. And then at that time, you know, we would, it's a kind of a council vote on it. That's an example of a special use permit.
Wouldn't it be referred to the planning permission?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, that too. But then it comes back after a recommendation is made, and then it comes back to us and we vote on it. But there are several different things that have to happen before it comes back to us in the initial, or the initial vote, the final vote is made.
Mr. Ball, Your Honor, I would like to comment. In reference to the proposed amendment, special use permits specifically in an R2 district, I request that we consider the ramifications of such a motion. Unfortunately, the property in question, Mr. Zellers, has already been modified to accommodate inhabitants. At the request of Mr. Lincoln, I visited this property several months ago to view its appropriateness in relationship to other structures. I found upon examination of the premises that the property in question was professionally assembled and appeared to blend well with the neighborhood. As a matter of concern, I asked Mr. Lincoln if all prerequisites for such an addition had been secured or approved. He assured me and Mr. Zeller that there would be no resistance or objection to the structure. On the surface, Mr. Lincoln was correct. In all actuality, he was wrong. The objection is not from any one individual, but stems from the interpretation of our city charter and code. While searching, while researching this issue, I found that our code was amended in 1991 where it clearly states that no special use permit will be issued or considered in an R2 residential district. Upon further investigation, I found that Mr. Lincoln, who's worried this change will affect and who has asked us to approve this change, introduced this amendment that places such restrictions in an R2 district. Moreover, I understand that the zoning board had originally recommended special use permits in an R2 area, but Mr. Lincoln and another councilman rewrote the recommendations to their satisfaction. It is unfortunate that Mr. Zeller was misled. Therefore, in this special situation, I would not deny him the special use permit. In summary, I would stress that we do not overextend our authority to accommodate a select few. It annoys me that our city charter and code has become an instrument of convenience and not of principle. In the future, I would strongly suggest that we consult all available resources before making any assumptions, namely our city charter and code, city attorney, and in this particular situation, our zoning inspector.
I get a comment. Any comment to the council? Public hearing is closed.
Be resolved that the proposed amendment to Section 80-6.1 of the zoning district of the city of Fulton entitled "Special Use Permits" is hereby approved.
I'll offer it. Second.
Roll call, please.
First word? Yeah. Second word? Yeah. Third word?
Yes.
Fourth word? Yes. Fifth word? Yes.
I would like to thank all the county council members who've supported for this so far.
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise, receive sealed bids in his office in a municipal building, Fulton New York, on and before May 19th, 1992, up to 4:00 p.m., tree and stump removal throughout the city of Fulton in accordance with specifications prepared by Ryan Edith of the Engineering Department, Deputy Deputy Commissioner.
All in favor, indicate by aye. All opposed, say no.
This is a proposal for fee rates for the city marina, and we'll refer to Alderman Myers.
The rates are going to propose a compromise to what they have in Swigel. I think you have the amounts to discuss.
Yes, the amounts that were discussed was for a season, usage which runs from about the middle of May until the locks close sometime November, I believe, is $20, $25 a foot for city residents, that's resident city of Fulton, $30 a foot for non-residents. And for daily use, it would be $50 a foot for residents and $75, 75, I'm sorry, $50 cents a foot. I don't own the boat. $50 cents a foot, I'm sorry, correction, for residents and 75 cents for non-residents. With...
That was with... Resident and non-resident coming to a place that is $50 cents...
Another correction.
75 cents electricity and water, $50 cents airbrush.
Okay. 75 cents electricity and water furnished and $50 cents per foot for slips without electricity and water. And the payment is...
Chris agreed to take the payment. I'll just mention...
Those will be posted where payments are to be made in the rates.
What's the...
Like on May 18th, 1992.
They're crazy if they don't. We don't haul votes up from the bottom.
Motion, please. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Resolved, this county council approves the following bills. Jones Chemicals, $1,100 dollars for chlorine. Martisco Corporation, $1,080.96 for one fire hydrant extension. They're both on budget items, but over $1,000 charter limit requires council approval.
All in favor? All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Okay, item number seven has been tabled for a future county council meeting.
Next item?
Resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a proposal between the city of Fulton and John R. Wilkins Construction Company, Camillus, New York, in the amount of $2,200 for additional roofing and rafter work at the Recreation Department Storage Building. All of said costs have been pre-approved and will be paid by the city's insurance company.
Motion?
I'd like to make a comment first, if I could, that the additional fees that they're looking for on there is due to the fact that they didn't have sufficient nailing timbers to reconstruct portions of the building that was burned, and that's why they're looking for additional monies to take care of the additional work that they did.
Any other comment?
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. Next item?
Resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign an agreement between the city of Fulton and Cooper Decorations Syracuse, New York. That agreement would allow Cooper Decorations to purchase 49 old Christmas decorations at a price of $1,000 to be paid by deducting $500 from their 1992 and 1993 Christmas contracts with Cooper Decorations.
Any comment?
Everybody know anything about this?
Yeah, Your Honor. What happened is, is last year, the city chose to go with new Christmas decorations, which were put up, and we signed a three-year contract with Cooper Decorations, and we saved $3,000 per year in the city budget for that. The old decorations that were taken down, Cooper took and stored them at no cost in the city of Fulton, and we couldn't get rid of them. In fact, we couldn't get anybody to buy them because they were so old and dilapidated. So Cooper has made an offer to buy them, and I suggested that we take their offer because we couldn't even get rid of them. If we had to store them there, we'd pay as much in storage charges as we would to try to get rid of them. I think it's a pretty good deal. Alderman Myers was with me and with...
Any other comment?
Motion's please. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Resolved, the report of the receipts and disbursements for the city clerk's office for the month of March 1992 in the amount of $5,603.52 be received, approved and placed on file.
Motion, please.
Got a second?
All in favor? All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next item, please.
I'd like to, this is, Your Honor, I'd like to refer this to the city attorney and see if this is something that we could do by amending the code, by simply adding a section, or if we would have to have a public hearing.
Okay, refer to the city attorney.
What this is, is at the last county council meeting that we had, we implemented some new building, building fees for building permits. The county council wanted to add a couple new fees, and what this would do would simply amend a new section in the, in the city code by adding that fee. The question that needs to be answered, and I was talking to Spencer today about it, is whether or not we could just simply amend it by adding the fee or if it would take a public hearing.
Nope, no public hearing, Mr. Perry.
Okay. Well, if that be the case, the resolution agreed that Chapter 177 of the Fulton City Code entitled "Science" be amended as follows, add 177-25A, paragraph D, the fee for erecting the sign shall be $25.
Move ahead. All in favor, say aye.
I got some tables. I got one. All in favor, say aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign an agreement between the city of Fulton and county of Swigel for computer mapping and implementation components for the municipal wellhead protection rate program at a cost of $15,000.
It's a grant outright in state or...
State.
From the state, so it costs us $0, and this will, a public program to protect the openings of the wells and make whatever additions or construction is necessary.
Motion, please. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Resolved, that Chapter 177 subsection, 177-33 of the Fulton City Code entitled "Certificates of Zoning Compliance" be amended as follows, add 177-33E, the fee for certificates of compliance shall be $25.
Any comment? I think the present fine fee is, what, $5?
There's no...
There's no fee, which obviously doesn't even cover the cost of the...
Motion, please. Move ahead. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Resolved, that Chapter 78 subsection, 78-26A, the Fulton City Code entitled "Building Permit Fees Be Amended As Fowls," we would delete the special note and add the new note, which would simply say, "Construction fees to be applied to the extension of electrical plumbing, heating, and ventilated installations." This also applies to existing structures.
I think Steve One can come in on this.
Well, right now, we're charging like $5, we're going to charge $5. This would just bring us into a more realistic price range for building fees, starting at $40 going up there.
Right now? Who's here?
Motion, please. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Whereas the recreation commissioner has received a quote from Atlas Fence in the amount of $1,180 to erect a six-foot chain link fence around East Side Pool, along with three strand barbed wire to prevent illegal entry to the pool. Whereas $1,000 is budgeted in the recreation account for the fencing, whereas this would create a deficit in the amount of $180. Now therefore be resolved, the recreation commissioner be authorized to purchase the fence from Atlas Fence at a cost of $1,180, and the city chamberlain is authorized to transfer the additional $180 from the contingent account into the beach and pool account to cover the cost.
Question. If I could ask, Barry, where's the fence going to go, Barry?
He's not here.
The fact that he's not here, I think you stated that that's six-foot in their jump for height?
Oh, yeah, six-foot chain link fence with three strand barbed wire.
At the top.
Correct.
Okay, I was concerned with the six-foot. I didn't hear the barbed wire at the top. I hope that will deter some of it.
Do you want to table it, Dave?
I, I would like to talk to Barry more about the fence. It's in concern with the six-foot height.
Want to motion a table?
Yes, I do.
Okay, second?
Second. All in favor, say aye. What does it know? Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Resolved, that the police chief is hereby authorized to purchase from the New York State bid list dated October 30th, item five of 11992 Chevrolet Caprice Police Car, total cost of $14,065 to be direct charged to the 83120 Police Department account. This is a budgeted item.
Motion, please. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no.
Please, that's an order.
Motion's carried. Next item, please.
Resolved, that Chapter 165 subsection, 165-58, the vehicle transport is the city of Fulton entitled "Prohibited Parking at All Times," be amended as follows. Rescind 165-58, which reads, "Parking prohibited at all times on South First Street on the west side from 99 feet south of Rochester Street north to the pedestrian mall." Add following two new subsections. Parking prohibited on west side of South First from a point of 88 feet north of Rochester Street northerly for a distance of 87 feet, and add parking prohibited on the west side of South First Street from a point of 257 feet north of Rochester Street for a distance of 83 feet or to the pedestrian mall.
Hey, Joe. What's that all sound?
Thanks, John. I didn't want to show my...
It wasn't...
Between what streets on Rochester?
Howard, Howard Street.
Anybody else, Howard in?
Yep, Howard.
This is an ordinance change that was requested by former Alderman Hoppe. He asked we do a feasibility...
Yep, Howard Street.
Um, this is an ordinance change that was requested, uh, by former Alderman Hoppe. He asked we do a feasibility study on limited parking across the street from Fulton Savings Bank. So what I did is, uh, I did an in-depth study of the widths of the road. I've determined that it's wide enough to do that, to allow three more parking spaces across the street from Fulton Savings Bank, on South First Street, on the west side of the street, and still have enough width in the roadway to allow traffic safely. Um, I took it a step further, and I went further north from there, from that point, in front of Fulton Sub Shop, Salvation Army, and Streer Men Sanford. That too, that area, that roadway, is large enough, wide enough, to allow parking on the west side of the street. This has not been allowed for several years. I think it's a good idea, uh, we can pick up another four spaces in front of those three businesses, so we'll pick up a total of seven additional parking spaces. Um, I'm suggesting that we only do it for a thirty-minute period. This way, it'll allow people to stop, go in, do their business, pick up their food, or pay their insurance, or go to the bank, and get out of there and allow someone else to use it. Proudly.
The idea's good, I, I don't think that thirty minutes is enough, though.
Well, if we go to four hours or two hours, then you're gonna use the, the quick. Well, that's up to you people, whatever you want.
The council, uh, for one hour, somebody isn't gonna do extensive shopping, they won't have enough time, but, uh, it's pretty difficult sometimes to conduct business in an hour if you're there, especially in a rush hour. Uh, it, it might be enough to give them a, a safety margin, but not so much that they can, uh, you know, go all over town. What is the rest of, what does the council think?
I think the, uh, the reason behind that was because of the bank and the sub shop is kinda like quick service, and then the, uh, insurance. And I don't think he was thinking of extended shopping, because that, uh, areas already designated for them, that's an L B parking area there. Am I right in thinking that's what we're thinking?
Yes, I mean, if, if you wanna pick up a sub, you gotta park in a parking shop or somewhere else, and it's quite a walk. This is a, a convenience for the businesses.
I realize what you're getting at, but, uh, I, I just.
If someone wants to park an hour, they can park in a parking shop, or one of the other designated areas.
Well, I suppose you can always amend it if we get some complaints on.
Sure, sure. You gotta start somewhere, but I think the downtown area needs it. Need all the help we can get.
Good idea.
It can be done safely, and we have all the materials to do it. Only thing we have to do is wear a, a sand blaster to remove the, the present center line that we have, we have to move that over.
Now we just open up First Street, pretty neat.
True.
I have another question. Does anyone monitor the parking and how long people stay in a parking area in the designated area for shopping? 'Cause I've received a lot of complaints in my ward that people cannot find a place to park because the employees are using that for parking, and they have a lot designated. And the offenders are the employers themselves, where they refuse to ask their employees to park somewhere else, and yet we're complaining that we're not bringing in enough money in sales tax, but we're not giving people a place to park to go shop.
So the problem is.
So are the police monitoring how, how long?
We get hundreds of tickets out. Uh, what happens is, the employees watch their, their watches, and before the four hours is up, they go and they move their car to another spot. Then they have an additional four hours. This is.
Can you, uh, identify most of the employee cars?
The ones that, uh, are designated to park in the permit parking only, we have a file of, of their vehicles and plate numbers and so forth. But if they're not registering, then we have no idea what their vehicle is and, and where it's at.
Uh, are you saying that they, they check the time and then, uh, either move the cars or put in more money?
Well, there's no, there's no money there, it's just four-hour parking in the main lots.
And they move it?
Yep, they've been doing that a lot. They're lying, I don't know how to solve that problem, other than having the merchants stay on their employees, uh, to see if they're kind of.
Why can't we have a number of parking places where for the designated parking plate parking lot and assign numbers to the car? That's what they do in, uh, business, and then you know where the car's supposed to be, and if it's somewhere else, you give it, give them a ticket.
Our designated lot is not that wide, it's one across from Fulton Savings Bank. Who do, who decides?
I thought it was one B M, that was a black line.
Yes, there is, and the people are refusing to use it. They don't wanna have to walk, uh, a block.
If you give them a ticket, maybe, they would use it, just to force it along.
Yeah, we are, we're giving all several tickets, and, uh, it doesn't seem to be working. It's gotta be helping some, because people don't wanna get the tickets, but, uh, they're still doing this practice of moving their vehicles before their timing is up.
Boss, maybe, and I get together.
Yeah, we, okay, let's cross all these.
Thank you. Are we, uh, we need a motion to play after.
Motion, please.
Uh, should we table this until you're on a second?
Well, I think this is the fourth thing. This does really affect the.
Okay, we're gonna go thirty-minute part?
Yeah, go through thirty, we'll try it anyway, if that's okay.
Motion, please. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carried, next item, please.
This is the second part of what, uh, how we, Lieutenant Allen drew up. Resolve that Chapter one sixty-five subsection one sixty-five sixty-four of the Vehicle and Traffic Board at City Fulton entitled Time Limit Parking be amended as follows, one-half hour parking allowed on the west side of South First Street from a point twenty feet north of Rochester Street northerly for a distance of sixty-six feet, and one-half hour parking allowed on the west side of South First Street from a point of a hundred and seventy-three feet north of Rochester Street for a distance of eighty-four feet.
That's the same thing. It's, it's, it's part of this.
Oh, I see.
Motion, please. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carried, next item, please.
Whereas the City of Fulton, New York, received a federal grant in the amount of one thousand one hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars for private of the wastewater collection facilities, whereas the city received an overpayment of eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars from the EPA for this above project, which represents the federal share of disallowed cost of the recovery. Whereas said refund is due to the Environmental Protection Agency within thirty days of their letter to the City of Fulton dated April twenty-second. Now therefore be resolved, the Mayor is hereby authorized to sign, sign this document, and City Chamberlain is authorized to sign the appropriate voucher and issue payment to EPA for the bill in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Just another case where the, uh, state mandates something, they claim is an overpayment, we have no way of proving otherwise, and if the money is returned to them within the thirty days, they can inflict very heavy penalties on the city, and they don't hesitate to do that as they threaten to do so in the past, so I'm afraid it's something we have to do.
Motion, please. Move it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carried, next item, please.
Resolve that the Mayor is hereby authorized to sign the project, grant decrease for project of the wastewater treatment plant, and close out the project.
This only informally, this project is over completed, paid for, and this is the final.
Motion, please. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carried, next item, please.
Resolve that this common council, my, count, common council hereby accepts the request for contract extension from Beveritt's Lake Management and Enterprises Incorporated for the First Ward Water Sewer Expansion Project at no additional cost to the City of Fulton.
I move it. All in favor? All opposed, say no. Motion carried, next item, please.
Resolve that City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise and receive CO bids in his office in the Municipal Building Fulton, New York, on June second up to four P M for library roof repairs in accordance with specifications prepared by Omega Design Syracuse, New York.
Motion, please. Second. All opposed, say aye. Withdrawn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried, next item, please.
Resolve that City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to pay the total premium due for the Police Professional Liability Policy renewal at a cost of twenty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, this is a budgeted item.
Motion, please.
Joe, can you explain that a little bit?
Well, this is, this is the, um, annual premium, which is due for our Police Professional, uh, Liability Policy, which protects, um, our police officers, Police Department, for any, um, any liability in accordance with, uh, carrying out their duties as police officers. And this is just the renewal.
Any other comments? Yes.
Can I use so much liability, please, carry?
One million dollars.
Any other comment?
Motion, please. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carried, next item, please.
Resolve that Chapter one sixty-five subsection one sixty-five dash fifty, Ve- Vehicle and Trac, Traffic Board is, uh, City Fulton entitled Prohibited Turns be amended as follows, add a new subsection which reads No Left Turns While Exiting Kentucky Fried Chicken's New Drive-Thru onto Route four eighty-one.
Howie, you wanna explain that?
They just installed a new drive-thru at Kentucky Fried Chicken where they're, they had a solarium there, and they removed that. They had a solarium on the south side of Kentucky Fried Chicken, they removed that, and they installed a drive-thru. And we're asking that they're not allowed to turn left as they're exiting that drive-thru because it causes a hazardous condition. You have to enter, like, uh, just to the left of Dandy Donuts, and you come around the back and then face four eighty-one as you're going through the drive-thru, because they have limited space there. We did the.
Howie?
Yes.
Isn't this similar to Wendy's and.
Did the same thing.
Long Beach Bank, I believe?
Yes.
Is McDonald's, McDonald's is not like that, though, is it?
No, they have, it's a little different. But, uh, I think it'll, it'll be an asset to, uh, traffic safety, and, uh, it'll help control traffic flow there, 'cause it's quite congested with Dandy Donuts there, and with the new drive-thru, obviously it'll be busy because it's new, and, again, we have the materials in stock, it won't cost us anything.
Mike Greer, this is a very dangerous situation at a focal place.
They try to make left turn on forty-one, that's a dangerous situation. I know, I do it every day, but.
All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Isn't that the same, it's just one street, I think I'm confused here. Let's see, Kentucky Fried sits here, and Dandy Donuts is here, and it's all on one street. You can turn left or right coming out of Dandy Donuts, but you now cannot turn left or right coming out of Kentucky Fried? Is that right? You're all in the same parking lot right there, aren't you?
Right.
Coming left out of Dandy Donuts and coming left out of Kentucky Fried Chicken, with the congestion that's there, and there's a curve there.
I know. They should do something to that curve, you're right. The curve is the whole problem, not the turning. I understand.
Well, it does, is now you've got two driveways exiting very close to each other, turning left, and you know, that's a little tricky.
Excuse me, your honor?
Yes.
They just put their, they just put their money, it's obviously putting a drive-thru there, KFC did, and I'm wondering if this is going to affect their business in some way, a lot of people aren't going to wanna.
They want that.
They do want that?
Yes, we've talked.
Well, then I, hey, I'll for it then. I just see to be that it would cut down their business, a lot of people wouldn't wanna be able to take the left.
Let him, let him speak, please.
What's good for letting people from coming out of the KFC parking lot going through Dandy Donuts? I mean, you're creating, I mean, I think you're creating, uh, uh, you're creating, you're creating people to go through the Dandy Donuts, people all through other parks.
Go by, they look at it, it's not possible, the way they have it set up, there's like pillars there where the sign is, and there's nowhere for them to go, but. Can't get on the drive-thru.
What if they cut the driveway off?
Hey, no, you would be able to go from Kentucky's exit into Downey, uh, Donuts, essentially, Downey. I think I'll open the franchise. You would be able to cross over to, um, Downey Donuts. There's just a state-owned yard. Dandy Donuts? Most of you don't remember the era of, uh, what was it? Anyway, uh, Downey?
Dandy Donuts.
No. No. Downey, no, that's a little before that, too. I told you you wouldn't remember.
I got a motion, second.
Second. We got the I, we got the I, right? And he knows, yes, we know.
And he knows.
Motion's carried. I have a good speech. We had the discussion, yeah, we're in the session. Howard, the discussion.
First item.
Uh, the first item is the New York State Conference of Mayors, um, if anybody's gonna attend, they have to get, they have to let me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
They have to let me know, because I would have to send in reservations, so anybody in the council, mayor, City Attorney.
No, I'm out.
I need to know what city officials are gonna attend.
What were the dates?
June, uh, June seventh through June tenth, in, uh, at the Neville Hotel in Ellendale, New York.
Let me, let me just say that in case there's any public criticism because city officials are attending this conference, I can't attend because I'm gonna be away somewhere else. If I was, I would go, and I wouldn't mind asking the city to pay for it. I just went to a, a conference of mayor, this is an organization that devoted solely to research and assistance to public officials, and they do one hell of a job, and I attended one in Syracuse for a day last week, and I tell you, the input you get from them is worth a lot more than what you pay. Now, true, it's a resort down in the Canskills, I, I admit, and it's a very pleasant surroundings, but you get, that's where they hold it for three days, and you get one hell of a briefing on the problems of municipalities in this state, and that's solely what they deal with. They're only in New York State, and, uh, in these days, when you need all the help you can get, believe me, that's a very worthwhile proposition, and I hope the council attends.
Your honor?
Yes.
For the public and council, now, some of the things they'll be talking about is consolidation of services, examples of what has worked. We've been talking about assets the first of the year. Uh, they have planning and zoning for elected officials, cutting costs, not services, we've been talking about that, incentive taxation, OSHA regulations to enforcement, uh, Americans with disabilities act compliant, privatization of public services. I mean, anything that we've been talking about since the first of the year. I think it would be a, a help certainly to us to, for at least one or a number of, uh, aldermen to go down to this.
You're right, and I'm glad you brought those items to our attention, uh, Jim. Uh, two of those, well, all of those items are important, but there are two that you don't even hear much about. One of them is, uh, compliance with OSHA directives. Now, that's very important, has to do with safety, it's a very complex subject. Now, we have a new Disabilities Act, it's gone into effect and has, uh, have a tremendous impact on all municipalities. And we need all the input on both of those that we can get. The other items are, are things that we, uh, can use any input to help us cut down costs and, uh, improve efficiency in the city.
A number of these are concurrent sections too, so if more than one alderman can go, it'd be helpful because somebody may miss one because they're going to another. I think everybody should, I hope they can. I'm sorry I can't go, but I have a clip and I can't, uh, break. Or not aldermen, maybe, you know, Searah or Karenie or-
Oh, yeah, well, I certainly hope Spencer can make it because I'm sure that, uh, there's a lot of things there, he could help me with it.
We also get to talk to elected officials in other cities, to talk about telling our problems and how we're trying to solve them and they can tell us.
Well, that's what happened that time on Saturday, uh, Mayor Hammer was there from Swigel and he and I had long, uh, pleasant talk and, uh, as a result, we're gonna have more meetings. And we're gonna try and develop some programs that will be helpful to both cities, so, uh, it does, it is a very valuable, uh, power.
Um, why the motion? Does anybody know at this time who, uh, plans to attend? Why don't we make a blank motion, to authorize it? Why don't they, uh, they did make a blank motion and, uh, whoever can tell.
Anybody that, uh, anybody that's gonna go, please get to me right away because I've got many reservations for the end of next week.
Want to offer reservations?
Yes. Result that the elected officials is designated, I hereby authorize to attend the 1992 New York State Conference of Mayor meeting from June 7th through June 10th at the Nebly Hotel in Ellendale, New York. Be a further result, city chamberlain to transfer from the A1990 contingent account to the 1010 legislative account to cover the cost.
Motion please. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried, next item please.
This item has something that I'm sure many of the people here are interested in, especially the Fulton softball association. Has to do with insurance registration of sports participants. Uh, one of the questions that's been raised is whether it applies to all sports. I think that John Cook has a list of those who are required, uh, by the charts. John?
According, according to what was passed last year, uh, the organizations which must provide proof of liability insurance to the city prior to the use of municipal facilities are Fulton Youth Soccer and Adult Soccer Leagues, Fulton Youth Hockey and all adult hockey leagues, Fulton Softball Association, Fulton Figure Skating Club, Pop Warner, Fulton Volleyball Association, Fulton Junior Baseball Association, and the Southern Lacrosse League.
I know that one of the questions that's been raised is why the sports participants need insurance when the city has insurance. The city has one million dollars in insurance. Now, I do a lot of negligence work and I have it for 40 years. Probably half of my business. Let me tell you today, a million dollars is not a lot of money in insurance coverage. You're reading the papers, you read about some of the verdicts. There was one here in Swigel County. That was a case that my brother had before he died and it was turned over to Amburski's office. The verdict in that case was $3,400,000. And this was not an injury like a paraplegic, you know, or quadriplegic, or even anybody that lost an arm or a leg. It was a serious injury, but not in that category. And I know there are a lot of other verdicts that exceed the sum of one million dollars. It is for your protection as well as the city. Because whatever insurance that you carry is in addition to what the city carries. The city is also concerned about having enough coverage because we are well aware of the fact that one million dollars is not a lot to them. And the city can't afford to pay any verdict in excess of the insurance coverage, I think we all know that by now. So, it isn't just a win. It's a very serious problem. On the bright side, there is a bill presently and before the legislature, something I've been advocating for some time with, uh, our Assemblywoman and State Senator, that will exempt sports from liability in municipalities. That bill is actually being committed at present time, I just received, uh, a brochure on that last week. Uh, explaining what's happening and what it's all about. Now, there is all, there is in effect now exemption from liability for people whose lanes are open to sportsmen, hunters, fishermen and so on. And it's the same principle, is that they're trying to apply in the legislation. So, there may be some relief in the future, but meanwhile, believe me, it, it's a worthwhile expense. And Chuck the softball associate is not being discriminated against.
George, one other thing on, on this schedule so that these groups don't think that we're just singling them out. Says, "In addition, any group requesting use of a municipal facility for an event which will encourage public participation and be open to the public will be required to obtain the insurance. It is not possible to list all groups that will be affected. It will be necessary to determine whether the insurance will be required on an individual case basis." So, as more groups come into the city, uh, and, uh, we determine that it's, it's necessary for them to have insurance also, it will be dealt with on a case-by-case basis.
Well, George, you know I don't like to argue with you, but you're just another man in the world too. John, you give me, you give us organizations that have to have it, give me ones that don't have to have it.
Or do you want me to give them to you?
Go ahead.
Knee-high tie. Or knee-high basketball. That, if you're regardless, that's what I keep hearing, it's funded by the city, but they don't have to have it?
Right. Because it's run by the city, I'm told that they don't have to have it.
Why? We have to have it.
Because the city sponsors it.
You want to sponsor us guys? Would you like to add anything?
Well, in all fairness, I don't think there should be any distinction, John.
It's, you know, it's one of the ones that, that came up in, in our discussion and, you know, I checked it out, it's because it's a, it's a city-run program. I understand that, uh, they are looking at getting their own policy though.
Knee-high, are these under 16? As a matter of fact, the liability there is much more severe than it is with adults.
It's really one we should, we should look into, it's something that maybe started after, after this was enacted, I don't know.
I believe, I believe there's more organizations also that are under, that are supposed to be under the city that don't have to pay insurance. And to me, that is discrimination. If they're, if they're an organization regardless if they're under the city or if you're playing on city, city property, there should be no difference, they should have to pay or we should have to pay.
I, I think something we should look at.
Uh, while I'm up here on this insurance issue, I want the board members to know, I have been talking with John, Tony Mile, I'll tell you, that man deserves a round of applause more than anybody probably in this room. Tony's been over backwards on this ASA insurance issue for us. Uh, it's probably a good insurance. But the issue isn't, if it's a good insurance, the issue is if other organizations don't need the insurance, why do we need it? That's the issue. And it is, you are being partialy, if you're letting them play on city property and they don't have to have insurance, then we should be allowed to play on city property and we shouldn't have to have insurance. If we want to get insurance, all well and good, but we should not be forced by the Recreation Department or the Common Council to have to have the insurance.
I, I agree, we should look at this. It says here to look at it on the, on an individual case-by-case basis. And we, we should look at that because it's for their protection as well as the city's protection. And that's what we're looking out after, is to protect the, the city of Fulton, that's why we were all elected here.
Well, I, I'd like the Common Council to know that most of the ball players are for the ASA insurance. But that's not the issue, the issue is that we're sort of being forced into it when other organizations don't have to have. The other thing right now with the ASA insurance, the problem is, all this dickering we've been going through is you have teams that have went out and bought uniforms for players. ASA, you have to be 18 years old. You have people that have now spent money for uniforms and they're 16 and 17 years old. They can't send their uniforms back. They can't take their name off it and sell it to someone else. So, we're in another situation where you've got 16 years old, 17-year-olds, this year, they're not gonna be able to play ball. Next year, it would probably have been a good idea if we could done it next year, but we're not talking about next year, we're talking about this year. A lot of you Common Council that I have talked to, when I ask you about this insurance, you pass the butter cake back to last year or the year before. They done it, not us, but yous can stop it, yous can read it, I've read it, I got it. Yous can turn it around and say, "We don't have to have it this year." We can sit down and get the issue for next year because there's a lot of stuff that's gotta be worked out. And I do want yous to know this. I've been told, I cannot prove it, but I've been told that Common Council would like to take the Fulton Softball Association over next year for the Recreation Department. Gentlemen, let me tell you why, you're welcome to it, I'll tell you why. You won't have a team one playing here. Because I already have a proposal for fields to go to play on from an organization in the city of Fulton. They aren't gonna charge us the so-called user fee that you people want to charge. I don't know if you Common Council members have heard about it, but the Recreation Department has heard about it. The article was, I thought that was squashed, but there was an article put in the paper saying that you're gonna try to hit us with it next year. So, why the hell beat our heads against the wall this year, we gotta do it again next year, I want it settled this year. If I'm president of the association or if he's president of the association, next year, I do not want him to have to go through what I have went through and what the board members and ball players are going through. We don't know when we're gonna play ball, but we do, because we will be on the field. A few weeks ago, there was a tournament that was gonna be held in the city of Fulton. Because of the, this lady got to run around from what I understand about different insurances, she went out and got different insurances, brought them over, they said they were the wrong insurance, she went and got other insurances, she was told the wrong insurance. They were gonna play ball to be arrested. Thirty-two teams, I think some of them were here, how many of the teams are gonna play in that tournament here?
Chuck, wait a minute. Chuck, I mean, let's be fair.
I'm gonna be fair.
She never got to me in the first place. Wait a minute.
I just want to-
All right, tell the whole story.
I'm going to, no, the story is, there's 32 teams. There's 32 teams that were willing, this is the point, George. There's 32 teams that was willing to go on that ball field and be arrested over this insurance issue. There is also 73 more teams that are willing to go on Denishe and Foster Park and be arrested if we cannot come to some kind of agreement on the insurance. And it isn't because you're charging us, the issue is, is you're not charging everybody.
I understand the point, but the impression you've left about that lady is that the city missed one of their, and that's not true. In the first place, she sat down. And let me speak when I'm doing the speech.
Certainly, you wouldn't call on me, thank you.
Oh. She never got in touch with me in the first place. She made the arrangements through Barry Ostreider and he was both sides of the question as to what happened when I tried to find out. In any event, once I did get into the picture and I talked to her, and she did furnish the insurance and I said that she, they could play as long as they had the insurance coverage. I had faxed copies of the, uh, pol- insurance policies, they covered everything on, in my hands, at least Thursday before Saturday. And then I find out that she said that they was canceled because she couldn't get insurance and that something, somebody said about somebody would be arrested if they went to go on the field. And I told you, yes, if they went out on the field without insurance, they would be arrested, that is correct. But she unilaterally canceled the, uh, tournament because she claimed that she couldn't get insurance when she had insurance. Now, the thing was wrong right from the start. She never contacted me in the first place to say they wanted to put on the tournament and request permission to use the field. That would have been the proper way to proceed.
Maybe she didn't come to see you, George, and you know I don't want to argue with you, but if it comes to argue, argue, you and me have argued before.
No, that wouldn't be the first time.
And I'm not gonna hate you when I get done.
Twice as much.
And you're not gonna hate me, but I myself contacted Barry Ostreider about this tournament. If you should have been contacted, Barry Ostreider should have told us to contact you. So, that part, you can't blame on us because we didn't contact you. That part, again, goes back to what the hell ever this problem is with the Fulton Softball Association and the Recreation Department. If we, we were supposed to notify you, he should have said, "Go see Mr. Velec." And I'm quite sure we would have came and seen you. Now, the other issue is, from the understanding I have, and I think she wants to clarify it, is she was given the runaround and that she's not saying by you, she's saying by city officials, I don't think she means you, but let her clarify that.
All right, I will say this much before she speaks. Barry did follow up, okay? Gave me two different stories about what happened and what was authorized and what wasn't authorized. I don't know where he is. But in any event, there did come a time when I talked to Sandy, I mean, I thought the tournament was going ahead. Now, go ahead.
Right from the beginning, Barry Ostreider did not tell me to see you, he told me to see Mr. Tietro. I spent time with Mr. Ostreider and the man that was with me is sitting right over there and we spoke and that's exactly what he told me to do, was to see Mr. Tietro, he told me what kind of insurance I needed. He never mentioned you, he never mentioned the council. I spent a lot of time talking to him about making sure I did everything the right way. So, I went and did what I had to do, I went down to see Mr. Tietro, he couldn't see me that day. I spoke with the assistant county clerk, I believe she was, she gave me a copy of what Mr. Cook has been reading out. I was told at that time, I did not have 72 hours to produce insurance before the tournament, I had five days. And it states that in the Common Council's rule here, five working days, not 72 hours. I bought the insurance that I thought I needed, stated by the county clerk's office and Barry Ostreider whom I thought knew what he was doing, I am not an official, I am a woman who wanted to get her teams to have a tournament. I paid $891 for the insurance to be told, "You did it wrong." No, wait a minute, this is what you told me to buy. So, now I'm on a time limit here, I'm down to my five days and I bought what I thought I needed and I take it down there and Mr. Tietro spoke with me in his office, I sat with him. He called some lady, I don't know if she was an attorney, insurance woman, and I had all the wrong things. When you talked about insurance in the city, I also had to carry the, uh, city of Fulton for $1 million on top of the ball players. I also had to insure the city, which is already insured, so now we have three lawsuits in case you get hurt, which I see makes no sense to me. And I said, "But whatever you need, I'll try." It is so difficult, if you have checked on this, and I- It is so difficult, if you have checked on this, and I did, it took me two weeks, to get insurance on a ball player himself in this state. I worked my butt off to do this so they could have their, their tournament. I had to go to New Jersey ASA, that's who you got your fax from. In the meantime, I was called and said, "You're too late. You needed this fi-" No, it wasn't, "She did this and she did that." I was called, Mr. Valette, I was called, and I was told, "Don't do it. They will arrest you," which we were threatened with right from the get-go. "If you play ball, you're going to be arrested." I am so sick of being told, "If you want to hit a softball, you're going to be arrested," that I feel sick. If you want to insure things, and, and my son plays junior baseball. My son plays junior baseball, as many, probably a lot of these people in here, their children play one of these sports or another. But I'm here to tell you, if he doesn't have that million dollar coverage, and I want to know, he's a participant, he can play, and I will go to his coach and I will ask him to ask all the children's mothers to contact the council members, is my son covered by a million dollar coverage? And I want every one of the children in the Junior Baseball League, at least them, I want to know if they're aware, are they covered, are they covered in the Junior Baseball League? Do they have a million dollar policy, please?
Sandy, wait a minute. Let's get back...
It's all pertaining to the same thing.
Let's get back to the tournament, first of all.
Oh, my tournament is the city's.
Let's clarify something there.
Okay.
Then come to my attention until Joe rightfully...
We apologize, thank you.
Rightfully came to me, and he was confused, and that's when I first heard about it. But up until you canceled it, I thought the tournament was still on. I never called up and told you that you were going, anybody was going to be arrested, right?
No, he didn't have it.
Okay.
Matter of fact, he told me, "I'll do what I can to put this tournament on for you."
Okay.
He did do that.
There was a misunderstanding.
Yes.
Somebody apparently told you about it, and that was a misunderstanding.
I'm so sorry Barry Ostrander isn't here.
Yeah, so...
Because I was ready to say...
Well, let me, let me, let me make one point that I think you ought to know, that as a sponsor, you are personally liable if anybody's hurt. So that insurance coverage, you too, you say?
Oh, I understand that.
Okay.
Oh, I understand that. But, you know, what I'm told is, we can't, we can't do anything unless we pay a million dollar liability. And I'm going to tell you, it costs a thousand dollars. I, I know. It costs a thousand dollars to do this, and this isn't with liquor or beer or anything. Who in this community can afford to put up a thousand dollars to play a sport in a city park that is already insured? I took all mine to do it.
You know where the real problem lies, where the real responsible person is? The people who bring these lawsuits. And I'm a man who did a lot of that work. And that's what's happened. No, there's not, no way there. I don't mean that. But that's what's happened to liability insurance. It's become almost impossible to buy. I'm sure you know, as the owner of us alone, that you can't buy grand shopping tournaments, right?
And I couldn't buy a ballplayer.
There you have it.
I didn't want state, this state won't do it.
You can't afford it, right?
I paid the check.
No, I mean grand shopping tournaments.
Oh, and who can?
No.
You have to...
You don't see the same thing happen to liability tournaments. Tomorrow, or Monday, a trial starts in federal court against the city of Fulton by a man who is a, he's got records longer on, I don't know if he got a teacher in front of me when I was judge. He's suing the city for police brutality that has no basis whatever, because I know the case. But he's suing the city, they're going to have to go through an expensive trial, and of course, whose premiums do you think that's going to increase?
We probably have to be wrong, first, to talk about suing the city.
I understand that.
So I don't think we should talk about police brutality.
See, I haven't, I'm talking about the proliferation of lawsuits, that's what's made insurance so expensive. And a million dollar coverage is not much.
I understand, but we talk about making revenue for the city. Where are we going to get the money for this and where are we going to get the money for that? Well, let's make them pay a thousand dollars to bring the city in. I know it's not a lot, but when you have a ball tournament, you're generating five, six, seven hundred people. So they go to the stores and they buy gas and they hit the ice cream stands and the kids go here and there. Maybe it doesn't seem like a lot to you. You do three or four of these, well, I understand Rivercrest wants one to make money, right? Well, my goodness, they must make money. And it's not personal.
It doesn't mean a lot.
Well, obviously it doesn't if there's so many restrictions put down that we can't afford to do it.
It's softball, it means a lot to me.
Not to the council. You said I'm not directing this to you. I'm looking at where the council obviously doesn't care.
Someone, someone... I'm not saying it's the cons- the Common Council or if it's the Rec- Recreation Department, but someone does not, for some reason, want Fulton Softball Association to exist anymore.
I, I think the original idea that for the user, a tax, that it's not a fee, it's a tax, was Mr. Thorpe, the chairman of the Recreation Commission.
George, can I say a couple things?
No, Sandy.
We've got one more.
Yeah, one more. Yeah, let's...
Okay.
Yes.
They seem to be taking their homework today. I'm just curious, how much does the softball association cost this city, uh, as far as people coming to you with problems after getting injured?
I agree with you. Probably done. I, I agree with you. I agree.
There's no basis.
Yeah.
It's all...
We're trying to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many of yous have been around, sir?
Keep that, remember you're not...
Come on, give me a break. You have a million dollars to cover.
George, I have a thing for you.
Tony?
Two years, two years ago at Foster Park, an individual appeared to play for Armstrong. Crossed home plate drive down that. Okay? Who did his wife go after? The city? No. Who she went after? The uniform. Armstrong. They had deeper pockets than the city did, and she won seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
What?
Out of Armstrong. Believe it or not.
Thank you for standing up and making that point, because there's another point.
He did not try to sue the city.
Well, I'll tell you, tell you something, Chuck. A lawyer, a lawyer who sued that case ought to be disbarred for malpractice because he should have. You should always sue all the parties involved.
Wow.
You can laugh if you want to, but blame me, that's an article of faith among the legal profession. You sue everybody in sight, because if you don't, you might miss the most important one of all.
I'd like to ask Charlie a question. Charlie, you sat down to meetings with Mr. Crook and myself and, and, and you're new, John, I know that, and the commission. I know you haven't had the opportunity to meet with them in previous years because you're new at this. But from where we started at, which was one in left field and one in right, so to speak, do you feel we've made any progress, no matter if we're agreeable or not, that we've made progress in trying to work with it?
Yes, I do.
Do you feel that there will be further progress, maybe?
I hope so. I can't say yes.
Nicole, lawyer, like, answer.
Because I feel that there is, and then I read the paper, gave it up, and some...
I asked about the council, I didn't ask about the recreation.
But that's what I'm saying, you see, you read the paper and then you feel you didn't. But, Mr. Valette, I would like you, you alone, because I do not want the organization involved in this to be brought out in public, as of yet. And I would like you to just take a quick to get a deal like this.
Pretty attractive, huh?
I don't think so. If you'd want to force us out of the city of Fulton, he just read it, I can't show it to everybody, I would like to, but I'm not obligated to show it right now, but it's there.
Chuck, that lady that wants to speak.
All right, could I just say something to the, the councilman who said that you would take each organization on an individual basis and look at them, okay? How do you know that someone within an organization, and how can you tell that no one in that organization is going to sue the city? You don't know. How can you, if that's going to be the case, how can you say, "Okay, this one has to carry a million dollar policy and this one doesn't"? If you're going to hit everybody with a liability policy, it has to be every organization that uses every city, field, whatever. You can't pick and choose because you don't know who's going to sue you. And you're going to have egg on your face if you say, "This association doesn't have to carry a policy," and somebody falls and does permanent damage to their leg and sues the city.
I have an answer. The next meeting, I'm going to introduce a resolution that all sports participants must carry their own insurance.
That's all.
All.
Whether you're covered by...
Yeah.
The issue isn't just insurance, it's that everybody doesn't have half their chance of it. That gentleman there. I'm saying organizations got to carry it. Save families up in the park for a picnic. A bunch of them that get together and play softball, one falls and gets hurt. They got to carry insurance to them? They, the people that play on their parks, are they responsible for themselves?
No, you can't distinguish between organized play and just casual play. I mean, you obviously can't, uh, tell people like that to, uh, pay.
We can't, we feel our own responsibility. I like softball.
Down there, never come after the city. Never went after the...
This is a much, much misunderstood, uh, aspect. Participants themselves don't have any action because you assume the risk. Now, the case of the wife who sued, that's a different story. I don't know what the basis for the charge, complaint for negligence was, but obviously there was some there.
Yeah, but I'm a softball minister, so you don't make this play your own risk.
You're right. Ross.
Never made a mistake.
Doesn't have to, it doesn't have to. Ross.
And the rest of us formed the softball, and we had bylaws. And the bylaws stated we had a card, and it said, "Fulton Softball Association, City Fulton, will be not liable for any injuries occurred on the field."
That's right.
And, George, and I'm not going to do Charlie House, but one individual has caused all his problems in the city of Fulton. He's not here tonight, if he was, I could tell to his face. He has ruined softball because he got so greedy, he took everything for himself, and that's why these people are in the predicament they are now. And the bylaws stated that no body under eighteen would play softball in the softball association. Am I right or wrong, Your Honor?
That's right.
Thank you. I'm not wrong, Mr. House.
You are, that's wrong.
Would you change it? Yes, ma'am.
You want me to go back to the...
No, wait a minute, no. I got to get to that. John, you said you wanted to say...
Any answer to Sandy, uh, about the Fulton Junior Baseball? I don't know personally right now if they have insurance, but before they play, according to the, the city, they will have to have it. And they have to present that, uh, to Mr. Tietro.
Can I say one thing? I want you to think, you know something? I feel sad. I, I want you to know this. I, I feel really bad because I feel children are going to suffer. See, what you've done is you've had to make it a blanket thing. It has to be this way. There can be no pick and choose. And now, how will these, how will these little children raise the money for this million dollar coverage that, and it says, Alderman Lincoln introduced the following, moved its adoption? How will children in each one of these categories be able to come up with this money? Us as parents in the softball association will have fund drives for the children to play all summer?
Let me ask you this.
I feel...
No, not one of these organizations has come to us and protested this. As a matter of fact, Fulton Youth Soccer, who's going to be playing at Van Buren Park this year, kind of under the same rules that we want the Fulton Softball Association to play, just presented Mr. Tietro with a, uh, three, or a one million dollar policy, which, okay, which is costing each player three dollars and fifty cents. Under our proposal, it would cost each softball player one dollar.
How much is it going to cost?
But that's not the point. We pay enough money as it is.
This is a...
One dollar.
We cover a two million dollar...
I, I, I still tell you that the extra coverage is to your benefit as much as anybody else's. Believe me, one million dollars, not a hell of a lot of money. Just heard from Tony. Tony, how long ago was that case?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay? And incidentally, wrongful death carries interest from the date of death. So that's under fifty thousand dollars, it's plus interest.
Sandy, we, each organization was sent a letter last November third, including the Fulton Softball Association. I guess I asked why it takes this long, you know, right up until a couple of weeks before to address the situation, but, now, each organization was sent this letter, and we have no negative responses from anyone other than the Fulton Softball Association. And I, and I played down there a number of years. I, I liked playing softball.
Can I answer that question? What some of them have told me? They, this, some of them feel they don't want to rock the boat because they don't have to pay none of their maintainers. They feel that if they rock the boat on this insurance issue, they'll be in our boat maintaining the field like we do.
The Fulton Soccer Association is maintaining Van Buren Field and cleaning the backhouses over there to make sure that they're clean for their, for use of their participants and spectators.
I'll be maintaining, I just sit down and maul the lawn all the time, there's...
Well, they're going to be maintaining Van Buren Park, from what I'm told. The soccer association. And they're, and they're keeping the restrooms clean.
Okay. Anybody got anything new to add? You know, we could go on like this all night long.
I do.
All right.
The kids who can't play that are under sixteen years old, they work and they pay their taxes, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids, why can't they play ball? Would you rather, it doesn't cost them anything to get in a barroom door, you know? They can just walk right in there. Why can't they go down there and play a game?
That isn't our rule, that's the rule of the FSA. As far as I'm concerned, I don't care. I played with softball when I was, started about five years old. No, I guess I wasn't in bed at then, I'm sorry. Over in the car? Over in the car?
Fulton Softball, or Fulton Junior Baseball does pay, have the million dollar blanket coverage, and they also pay to maintain the covered field.
Charlie, I guess if, if we exempt, uh, Fulton Softball Association from this, insurance... Okay. What, what are all the other groups going to say who are doing this willingly and understand that it's for their own protection also?
Now, we're not here to be asked to be exempt. We're here to ask that every organization pays. That's what we're here to ask.
Okay, that's going to happen, I think.
You know, I, that's what I've told you from the beginning. I think insurance, I, and I said, I think most of the players agree that the ASA insurance is very good, but what we're saying is if we have to have insurance, why shouldn't every organization, whether you're playing what yous are saying in honor of City Fulton?
I, I get this.
I know, but I'm trying to...
I'm going to introduce a resolution.
I think we would all agree to that. And I, I think the organizations who don't have it understand that they need it.
Let's, let's have it settled. Hopefully, within two weeks, all organizations will be, by resolution of the council, have to provide insurance that participates, play on Fulton Field, and that the FSA is going to buy insurance. Can we consider that settled? Okay? Now, anybody have any new questions? Tony?
Yeah.
Uh, John Crook and myself and Charlie and David Halsted and Joe Tietro have done a lot of work on this insurance field. What the commission wants to do, and Barry's not here tonight, he's ill, so anyway, what we wanna do at the end of the summer is get all the organizations, I talked to you Friday, Chuck, about this. We want all the organizations to come in, we're gonna sit down and talk to them, not only about insurance, we're gonna talk to them about everything. What's happening right now, hockey is bitching at softball, softball's mad at soccer, soccer's mad at basketball. We want everybody to come into the room, and we're gonna settle it once and for all at the end of the summer. Did I tell you that, Chuck, or didn't I?
Yeah, but we're not mad at no one.
No.
I, I restate that, we are mad at someone. We're not mad at no sport organization, we're mad at whoever does only certain sport or...
I agree with you, everybody's mad at insurance.
George agrees with us.
I think that's a wonderful idea. There's a lot made of me and, I'd like to like it to do that, you know, that, of course, yeah.
The first sport will be top corner football in September, so we're gonna have it before September. Chuck, you bring two representatives, everybody else will have a couple, and we'll lay everything on the table.
That's the way to do it.
Okay?
Let me just make one comment about hockey. It was my number one sport. I played locally, college, semi-pro. If I had my brothers and I had the genie with a one wish, I'd ask for one more season of hockey. So any hockey player that raises any wage is crazy. When they run a fif, we run a fifty thousand dollar deficit operating that ice skate rink. So if you know any hockey players, tell them they're ready to cool. Yes?
Well, I remember something that you just said a little while ago, sir, and I thought it was kinda interesting, especially since this whole thing's about right now. I remember you saying to this gentleman here, that if they didn't go after the city, if their lady didn't go after the city, she was crazy. And I just think about this now, and I think, okay, now you're gonna have all these associations, and they're going to get their insurance, right? And in any case, you're gonna have the insurance on the fields anyway. So in other words, if this lady's smart, or whoever this next person is, if they go after somebody, they're gonna have to go after both insurances, right? So the whole thing's kinda...
What they do, if an action is brought against the city, or the association, doesn't matter. Then one insurance is excess over the other. In other words, you have three million dollars total insurance coverage. That's how it works. You might also be interested to know that New York now has, uh, laws about frivolous actions. You bring a frivolous action to the SNO America, you can be severely penalized financially.
The other issue is, as John and Dave know, they were at the meeting, and I thought it was squashed again until I read the paper.
Chuck, let me say, before you mention that, Ostrander has denied that interview to the OBM. He's denied he ever gave it, denied he ever said it.
Well, then, I still, I will still bring the issue up because it has been talked about. And that's the player, the user's fee. We feel, as long as we're maintaining these fields, why do we have to pay a user's fee? Now, these people...
Chuck, John has said that that is dead as of this year. And there's nothing going to be said in any agreement or deal concerning a user's fee for next year. That doesn't mean it's dead, but it doesn't mean, as far as right now is concerned, it's dead. And I don't wanna be a dead horse.
Well, I hope, it's, it's dead for this year, George, but what I'm trying to say, if we're gonna go through this whole thing again next year, if they try to say you're gonna pay a user's...
You don't know how I feel about it.
Chuck, I think what you're looking at, and the same was made in one of our meetings, that we would look at it. But I wanna add to that, and it's for certain, that if we're going to look at it for one, we're going to have insurance for all, we're gonna look at that fee for everybody to generate. It won't be for one.
And we should also look at the possibility of City of Fulton maintaining our fields for us, like they do everybody else. They maintain everything for everyone else. So what we're getting down to is what is fair for one, is fair for us. So if we're gonna look at insurance at you, that is good. If we're gonna look at the...
I can summarize it, I think.
If we're gonna look at...
I think that what you do is put down in dollars and cents what every organization contributes for maintenance, user fees, or whatever it is, and then the others are mentioned.
I think Joe has to...
Well, uh, I compared it with a resolution. Um, I'll read it, but... One thing, I wanna tell you something. I gave you, but you replied with your name. But one thing Chuck said tonight that I found out was, I would, I did work on this and try to help the association with, uh, Mr. Myo. And, you know, I'd love to see you at the place, I played, and I also, um, am coaching the girls' team this year. And the last thing, anybody up on this council, I'm sure, Mary, would wanna see if nobody plays softball. That's why I've been working with Mr. Myo, Mr. Crook, and the county council, trying to help you. The one thing I did find out, Chuck, is that the ASA, I made a call to a guy in the ASA, basically what you guys are gonna do is purchase the, purchase the policy, you know, you have to become a member of the ASA. Okay? Once you become a member of the ASA, um, it's my understanding, if a waiver goes over today, if they accept a waiver, it'll move up. How long would you buy the field insurance to become a member of the ASA? It's my understanding that there is also a waiver for people under eighteen years old. And, and the ASA, the way the guy who clinched me and the city attorneys, um, um, talked to him today, it was explained to me, if you become a member of the ASA, it doesn't make any difference if you're eighteen years old, you're sixteen years old, you'd still be covered under the ASA policy. Now, if the council wants to accept those waivers, that's up to them.
So, aren't you proud of the, with the insurance company? Cause there's still been some hear and say on...
How could they? I think you ought to hear the rest of us.
The only thing is, in this resolution, when we compared it, I compared it based on information from Mr. Crook, Mr. Myo, and that was that they were not gonna let anybody participate under, under the age of eighteen years old. I had a prepared waiver that was sent from CIGA, who sells the ASA insurance, where a minor with parental signature, and signature of the Fulton Softball Association, could play and would be covered under the policy. So that would, that would change the resolution. Senator, what, what do you think about that?
About what? Which part?
Under, under eighteen playing, with a waiver signed by a parent?
I, I haven't addressed that particular issue with the ASA, only the, the other original waiver.
Well, let me read this resolution first, and let's see what the council wants to do. Whereas the county council passed a resolution on September third, nineteen ninety-one, requiring all organizations using municipal facilities to submit to the city clerk's office a liability insurance policy in the amount of one million dollars for general liability, or in the event that alcohol will be served, legal liquor liability, and insurance policy providing fifty thousand dollars accidental health insurance coverage effective September third, nineteen ninety-one. Now, that was the resolution that was passed last year. Not what the resolution is here. And whereas Schedule A, the city's policy listed organizations which would be required to submit the proper insurance policy, and whereas the county council by resolution could either add or to or delete from such Schedule A, any organizations, and whereas the city, the recreation committee of the county council has submitted a waiver to the city attorney for his review, and whereas a waiver prohibits any participant from suing the city of Fulton for any liabilities for injury, and whereas the waiver would only apply to participants eighteen years of age and older. Any waiver by anyone under eighteen is not effective, it doesn't bind what we call an infant in law with under eighteen, so it is no value as far as that infant is concerned. And whereas the Fulton Softball Association has requested the county council approve this waiver in lieu of purchasing such insurance policy, and requests the city to remove them from such Schedule A adopted on September third, nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-one. Now therefore be it resolved that the county council hereby approves the waiver submitted by the insurance committee of the county council for the Fulton Softball Association in lieu of purchasing said insurance, and authorize the city clerk to delete Fulton Softball Association from Schedule A adopted on September third, nineteen ninety-one. And be it further resolved that there will, it will be the responsibility of the Fulton Softball Association to have all participants sign this waiver before they're allowed to play, and also be the responsibility of the Fulton Softball Association of checking agents of all participants to ensure that no participants are under the age of eighteen years of age. And each waiver must also be signed and approved by the Fulton Softball Association and filed with the City of Fulton Recreation Commission. And be it further resolved that the Fulton Softball Association agrees to join the Anderson Softball Association and shall purchase field insurance in the amount of two million dollars, such insurance to be applied for by the City of Fulton, and shall be paid for by the Fulton Softball Association as well as the fee for joining the so... The Anderson Softball Association. All requirements of this policy must be met before play starts. I didn't see that last word. Yeah? Well, two is what the ASA gives. That's their coverage.
All right, girl, so you said, so what I'm gonna see is, the fee is a hundred dollars for a field.
Yeah.
All right, what's the fee per team?
That's, I think it's ten dollars per team, so I think if you got seventy four teams, you have to pay seven hundred and forty dollars to join the ASA, and, uh, one hundred dollars, um, would be for the, uh, the insurance.
But if the one hundred dollars is not per team, that's just...
No. You, you'd bet, you'd pay a total of eight hundred and forty dollars, that would, that would join all your members under the ASA. And for the hundred dollars, uh, will give you a two million dollar liability with a five million dollar aggregate under the ASA. But we gotta get moving right away if you're gonna do it, because you start muddying.
Tony, on all fields that you play softball on, you understand that these are the only charges?
Best way to...
Ten dollars per team and a hundred dollars for joining.
It's ten dollars a team. And in their case, it'll be seven hundred and forty dollars. They purchase a two million dollar insurance from the ASA, which will cover two million dollars. If there's a lawsuit, then they go after that policy first before they hit you. And I think, I think it's a great deal for the softball association, seven hundred and eighty dollars, compared to ten thousand dollars, or, or whatever they were talking about. I asked Franny tonight, how come there was, that policy is so low? A hundred dollars for, Swiggle's got eleven fields, a hundred dollars for eleven fields. We got two, a hundred dollars? Because there's so many teams. Do you know how many teams there is? Four hundred thousand teams in the United States, ASA. Four hundred thousand. Ten dollars a team. Lot of, lot of, lot of teams playing. Right. Yeah. Now, the, now, the officials must join the ASA also, the umpires. They are covered, it costs them seventeen dollars a year to join, twenty-five dollars a year for a chap, to become a chapter. Every year you pay the twenty-five. Seventeen dollars a year to be an official, and that covers a hundred thousand dollars of personal accidental insurance. So when the official breaks his leg or whatever, uh, he is covered up to a hundred thousand dollars. So we're covered pretty well, right around the horn, we're covered.
And if you, any tournament must be sanctioned by ASA in order to be covered.
Tournament must be, must be an ASA tournament.
Any tournament you, you run down there, because you've got the policy. Got that, Chuck?
Oh, yes, I believe they can. By, by me reading the policy, if you are an ASA, maybe you can answer this, Tony. If they wanna hold, if a team wants to hold a tournament in their ASA, like, same, they can hold that tournament.
Everybody's ASA, everybody's play. You know, if you want a tournament with more teams being out of the league, no problem.
The ASA, the ASA only, only costs them ten dollars.
Yeah, yeah. If they wanna give you a tournament, it'll cost them ten dollars.
If they wanna hold a tournament, they won't have to get insurance because they will be covered by...
Get to them now. Not covered for alcohol. There will be no drinking. No alcohol on the field or by spectators, and that will be enforced. Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, they'll have to pay ten dollars to be ASA's thing.
I don't know what you can sanction, but I mean, you'd have to talk to the ASA hours done.
I believe that usually, I went to a lot of state tournaments and we weren't ASA things, but Fulton hasn't been ASA thing. I went to a lot of state tournaments and you signed an ASA...
Well, be sure it's done under their rules, because if you violate their rules, you may find yourself without coverage. Okay. Motion? All favor intended by I.
Aye.
All but no?
No.
Motion? Why? Motion's still shared.
You know, one, one thing, Chuck, and the rest of the softball players, now, Tony did a lot of work on this, and he should be... He should be commended for it, and so did Joey Tietro. Uh, but one thing you have to understand, no matter what you're reading in the newspapers, this Barry Ostrander has been in your corner, and you shouldn't sell him short.
No one's selling him short, but I can't quite believe it in his face, but go ahead.
I'm, I'm telling you, and I, I'm telling you that he's in your corner.
Well, what about the softball?
Can we just...
We don't have a contract, I, I know that they're gonna win three games to the field, and that's the...
Do you need, do you need number four?
They're gonna give you a bunch of waivers, and I don't have that all the time.
Well, I have one question, like, Joe, leave that, leave that completely off.
Right.
They ball.
We have, I mean, we have to start this, we have to agree with them, we have to, teams are agreeing, they're gonna pay ten dollars.
We have a motion to waive the policy for the first week of play.
Why, why we gotta waive?
Yeah, we're, we're... Tony can't get it.
Chuck, uh, suggestion, as you go, I think is, you guys come in, the insurance agent only being in the Swiggle, they think that they have documentation to say that they show up to play. If you could contact the agent, I'm sure that he would register these people, as you pick up teams. Yeah, he's in the Swiggle.
Yeah.
Oh, that's Franny's back. Franny called me tonight, he said, "Talk."
You got your seventy-four sportbooks down there waiting for you.
Right now, all the money that we had just paid, that we had just paid out, and so we start accumulating some more money, we're gonna have to get this ten dollars from each team. We're not gonna be able to do it in a week.
Chuck, better a buck a man. What you're saying?
But we gotta have it before we go on the field.
Okay, when you show up, buck free, put your shoes on, however be it.
For any one of the, the eight hundred dollars that they...
You don't, no, 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 no. You only have to cover the people that are there, Chuck, that's what I'm saying, you may have to base meal this. You gotta have the hundred bucks for the policy, okay? But you only have to cover the people that are there playing, which will cover those teams that are playing that night if you give the buck a man, and arrange it with the agent from the Swiggle. You understand that? Before they take the field, you've got... And you've got all paperwork there, they sign it, give you the buck, it's paid, you got a card, it's done. And the man's there, he thinks it should be covered immediately, if they operate like any other national insurance company.
Right, he's gonna be in the field.
If you arrange that way...
It's kind of out of teams, the teams are...
Oh, a team?
The teams have, the teams are already going, it must tend out. That, that's not the issue, the issue is, well, even words like Dave says, it's, it's wonderful, but if you could give up, waive the insurance for two weeks, that would know we would have the insurance.
The resolution's not going to go back until I sign it, okay? Let me know when you got the insurance policy.
Now, I'll get together with you right away. I'm back. Let me just, before you go into your session, let me get together with you, so we can get together tomorrow night. Because otherwise, I won't be able to see you again itself.
Tomorrow I have a softball game.
I'll get the next guy.
Chuck, give it back to that guy.
Chuck, it's mine, it's, it's my understanding that, Chuck, it's, it's my understanding if you pay the eight hundred and forty dollars, which, which would cover all your teams to join the ASA, the hundred dollars is for the policy, the guy told me if you bet one year, the city sends a check later for a hundred dollars after you join the ASA, that'd be ASA first. It would just, we could fax it into him and send him... the ASA first, it would just, we could fax it to him and send a check over in mail or something, and, and he would be covered before you started, started playing. You, you would have the eight hundred and forty dollars.
Or a couple.
Chuck, let me call Franny, maybe he can give you a credit.
I'll want credit for a week.
Joe, all I'm saying is, the resolution, you still have to go by the way of law, and so until you get the money to join, the new resolution can't take effect any later.
I, that's, that's what I'm, that's just what I'm saying, of course, my worst heart is ball one, I gave him this money from all the teams, you go, save it out, if we had waited for-
We got seventy-four, seventy-four teams, ten dollars per team. The ASA get together, what, two days?
No, thank you, I'm getting close to going to college, half the college, I just, I can't believe it, but you don't run the book next time, you don't have ten hundred and forty dollars.
I thought once we got through with the chief thing that we heard.
Oh, right, for amended for two weeks.
Like a pity, I haven't taken it, right? Little did I know.
Your Honor.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Mr. O'Malley, you might know the answer out there?
Yeah.
Delighted. Does any organization that goes under ASA, any association, have the right to increase their membership in any thing?
Oh, yeah.
In that case, if you only have money, how many do you have, Mr.?
Four.
Four teams? What we're talking about is approximately forty players, that you gotta contact, get a buck ahead, and a hundred dollars if we get the check up, that covers the association, and as you pick up the teams, and now it's a team that they come into play, and you add them to the roster of your association, and you're covered, you don't need the eight hundred and forty bucks up front.
Joe, you probably, you need it.
Eight hundred and forty dollars, we got seventy-four teams, it's ten dollars a team.
You need that at the same time, you need the hundred dollars, or you need seven.
Don't need to register them all the same day, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, but you're gonna do it three million, you're gonna do it once, once a week, you'd be, you'd be going out and getting donations every day of the week. And if they come and play, they're gonna be there.
Your, your resolution says, your old resolution says it can be changed by you, you, you consent here tonight, instead of us picking over it, just give us two weeks, change it so that we have two weeks to get you the money, then there's gonna be no problem, we can play ball, we can get you the money. I can get you the hundred dollars, I'll take the hundred dollars out of my own pocket to get you insurance. Because I know as soon as the old, the association gets money back into funds, I'll get that, but I'm not gonna put up eight hundred dollars out of my own money.
That's a-
You know, all I'm saying is just do it for two weeks, if we don't have the money, then you can say, bye.
You got somebody down here.
No, we shouldn't have to pay, you know, we couldn't have, they can, they can, they can all, like, give us two weeks. George, you know, that's the thing, never mind yours then. I guess found out, there's nothing to kidding, we'll pay.
I think I can screw you.
Chuck.
Athletic, the amateur athletics association, all of these organizations would be covered under one policy, they would have a million dollars personal liability, and also the teams would be covered, and you wouldn't have like five, six different policies going on here, and you'd have one name, and I think, after listening to this, I've been sitting here spinning my head, you've got more paperwork, you're creating so much work for yourself when there's one organization that covers it all, and that's the AAU. They give you, again, a million dollar personal liability, the teams get a million dollars, it's a two million dollars liability on top of the uh, on top of the uh, city insurance, and that softball team could be under that insurance, the, the, if you wanna start a figure skating organization, they would all be covered under one insurance, they would all be card carrying members, and you wouldn't have all that.
Yeah, can you get that?
I can give you that, if you become a member of them, Tai Kwon Do, and they cover everything.
Can you get that to, to our city clerk?
Sure.
Please.
And that way we're gonna be good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Goodnight, Chuck.
Chuck, can you stop?
I can't leave that, sorry, George.
Can you stop in my office tomorrow, 'cause I got the waiver and everything like that, that you would have to get signed, and enough paperwork to get on.
Right, there's no, there's not, you don't have to have numbers, it's our, it's our tiny waiver.
That's the way I understand it.
Right.
Gotta be, you gotta be a member first.
We'll start up the, our, definitely remember getting a copy of those bylaws.
The, these bylaws?
Those the old bylaws, or no one?
These?
No, bylaws.
No, you got these, yeah, they, they, well, I'm not gonna get here, 'cause we don't have any, wanting to get books printed.
George, sweet, go to the next item.
Yeah, we sure can.
Say goodnight, Chuck.
Here, this was ninety-one.
I got that one. Oh, ninety-one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it was sixteen years old, we're looking at it.
Was pretty pretty, nineteen fifty-five.
I got that one too, George, you go first.
Yeah, I know. Next item.
Next item is garbage and uh, trash picker revenue income. Um, I wrote a letter to uh, John Crook, budget chairman, and he asked me, and I think some lady asked me at the last meeting of um, what the, how the city was doing in regards to the sales of uh, garbage and trash pickers. And um, and what my projections would be, John wanted to know, for nineteen ninety-two. And basically what my report shows is that as of, as of uh, we started on October twenty-first nineteen ninety-one, and we have sold a hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine garbage stickers and three thousand two hundred and twenty-five trash pickers, the total sales-
Goodnight, Chuck. Sorry, Joe.
Uh, this is fair enough. Uh, the total sales, most of ninety-three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. That's after twenty-seven weeks of sales. If you average that out, uh, your honor, John, um, that averages out to be three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and se- uh, seventy cents per week. If you then multiply the amount by the, the rate of sales, our averaging, at this time, by fifty-two weeks, our yearly sales in nineteen ninety-two would be approximately a hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. As you know, on the budget, we budgeted three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for garbage and trash pickers. At present, the local grocery stores have outstanding invoices for garbage and trash pickers in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. If you then add those to the invoices, and what we, we presently have already collected, the total sales approximately, this is my best guess, by nineteen ninety-two would be two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. City chairman had approved thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of that back into nineteen ninety-one. So this was then turned into total sales for nineteen ninety-two, estimated sales of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Obviously, there's a shortfall of about a hundred and eighty-three, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars as anticipated, as we, we put in the budget, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But there are two factors that I'd like to report to John and your honor and the council. We also budgeted a hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred dollars for tipping fees. The county did not institute tipping fees until April first, so obviously we're gonna save some money in the tipping fees, how much, we will not know, I asked Bucky about that, so there's gonna be a saving there. And since the county instituted a seventy cents per bag charge that they now instituted out at the landfill, that's starting to increase the sales around the city, because everybody who went out to the landfill is now coming back to the city. So, don't hold me to this hope, but, um, because I, I don't know what's gonna happen with this thing, it's all a guess, I would anticipate unless something really drastically happens, and our sales really go up, about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar shortfall.
On the right side too, though, shortly the uh, city will be taking, uh, what they call the fluid from the land, what they call it, John?
Leachate.
Leachate, and processing it and charging the county back, so that may help that uh, shortfall.
Joe, could you keep us abreast of the term, with the situation? Right, right, I will, and um, hopefully that shortfall will be smaller and smaller.
What was our disbursement for April, you know, what we paid, or, or don't we have that? What we paid for fifty?
Those, those bills won't be out, no, later this week.
I just wonder if we knew what we paid for April?
We got our tally, our tally, we ten thousand dollars.
How's that current of budget?
Pardon?
How do you, how's that compared to what?
We keep running that, we, well, months will be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and got a hundred and fifty-three thousand in the budget.
I'll bet that.
Anything else that uh, anyone wants to bring before the council?
Yes, I would like to introduce the resolutions, the best controversial one, and especially a new one for the, for the landlord.
Resolved, city clerk is hereby authorized, directed to advertise for public hearings to be held on, uh, when you wanna hold hearing, John? May nineteenth. Relative to the petition for change of zone submitted by Dan Agatha Zeller for a special use permit to convert a three-car garage into a one-car garage and a one-bedroom apartment for their property located in nineteen West Fourth Street.
This is just for the public hearing, right?
That's correct. Do we have sales tags to talk about? You wanna talk about?
Well, we might as well wait, we have a right to offer anyway. Anybody have anything else they wanna bring before the council?
Just one, I would like to thank this wonderful young lady for filling in for me for the fifth word, this Annie O'Quinn, thank her, and thank her for her honesty.
And I likewise, the young lady on my left. Debbie, thank you very much, she done a great job, didn't she? I think did better than I did.
In a way, I'd like to, I'd like to uh, thank Becky Schiff, and uh, I think tonight was a, you know, was a controversial, and I think it was a good night for people, these young people to get a real good idea, I mean, the city government, sometimes it's not always positive, but, I mean, the conclusions may be positive.
Yeah, I would also like to thank everyone who was here too, it's also like the, very well organized, uh, active organization, you know, you, we can, uh, I support it all part of it.
And Joanne, thank you for representing the third ward tonight.
I'd like to thank Mary Van Veen who come in to join us late from Buffalo, getting a little bit late, and I'd like to thank the Alex also for her work, it's been kind of, my first time. I too would like to thank, uh, Heather Stuntford, she, I know, she's uh, real excited, I think, uh, city attorney, but uh, I think she enjoyed it. I too would like to thank you out, it was an excellent meal, and I filled up my pockets with ZD and-
I'd like to thank Mike Carter, he's a man also, he likes to join, maybe, might be fun being an alderman someday, or she might wanna yoga.
Who said that, Joe?
Well, I would like to thank the young ladies who's sitting at the roster, made a lot of emotions, a lot of time, and they've been very chatty. Martha.
Oh, my God.
George has been a privilege to me. I looked on at Spencer, I recall once upon a time, I was both Spencer's age, thank God that you, Spencer, not me. You know, I don't wanna sound too much like a political scientist, I'm giving the underneath or right of stage comments, but we have to govern ourselves, no one else can govern us, and this is where it's at, right here locally.
Yeah, you're right, we certainly had it up tonight. Thank you for being with us, Jeff, and the lady on your right, uh, real polite.
Jennifer, this is Jennifer Austin, by the way, and that's, she had this zombie town boarding for the past, and someone aware of the process.
Oh, I'm sure she has. Okay, somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn this session?
I'll talk to you.